It's four o'clock, so I will call to order the second monthly meeting Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, Hendersonville City Council. Councilmember Hensley is out of town and was going to try to come in virtually. I'm not sure if she's been able to, but if not, there are no votes this evening, so it is information that will be presented this evening. You have the agenda in front of you. Anything anyone would like to have changed on the agenda or a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Not? Those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Ayes have it. We're ready to go. Okay. Parking ordinance. Speaker, are you going to start us off with this?
Yay. Good afternoon. Yes, it's parking again. Why parking and why today? Well, we have to adopt an ordinance to implement everything that you guys have been talking about and that all of your staff has been working so hard towards. This is going to be on your March 2nd agenda for vote, and assuming that you adopt these this ordinance, these regulations, everything will actually go live. We've been saying March 1st, but because we need to adopt the ordinance first, it's actually going to go live March 3rd, early morning, 4:00 a.m. So we wanted to bring everything back one more time because we have to adopt something, and so this is the chance to work out any last minute issues or things that need to be worked out. So, all right. So the first thing I want to talk to you about is parking zones. The ordinance authorizes the city council to establish parking zones, and with what we're about to do, you're about to implement three different types of zones, okay? Metered zones, paid zones, and un-metered zones. Now, what is a metered zone? A metered zone is your on-street parking zone. According to, and I only, this sank in finally this week, so that's why you're just hearing for this for the first time, but under the law of North Carolina, on-street parking, you really don't charge and can't charge for parking on the street. What you charge for is the meter time. The meter that there is that is timing how long someone is parking there. So in order to charge for meter time to time parking, you really have to implement some sort of time limit. Otherwise, there would be no need for parking meters, and you would charge nothing for parking on Main Street. So we have written into the ordinance that all of the on-street parking is a metered zone. Your paid zones are your off-street facilities, your lots and your parking deck. The un-metered zones would be the on-street parking where there's no time limit or where there's a note where there is a time limit, but you're not enforcing it using a meter. Okay? So what are the rules that are going to apply to metered on-street parking zones? And you've heard most of this before. For our purposes, the kiosk is also the meter, okay? And the app can also be used too to serve as the meter. So I've written that into the ordinance that the kiosk will also be the meter. The time limit that we're recommending is five consecutive hours. That means that if somebody were to pay for five hours, they could come and go. In the on-street part, they could be there at lunch and come back around dinnertime within that five-hour limit. If they left for a while and then came back later, they would get another five-hour consecutive, five consecutive hours, okay? You just couldn't stay parked in one park for more than five consecutive hours. The rate, the meter rate, meter fee is $2 an hour. Is there a max for Main Street? No max for Main Street, okay? If you park 30 minutes or less, there is no meter fee. There's been a little confusion because, you know, we've all been kind of just saying first 30 minutes free, but it's really not first 30 minutes free. It's if you park 30 minutes or less, it's free. If you park 31 minutes, you're going to get charged for the full hour, $2. Yes, sir.
And the only way that would happen is if our meter reader thing goes around and reads that you've been there for longer than 30 minutes? Like the kiosk has no idea how long you've been there, correct? Other than when you first initially punch in?
Great question. All right. So what happens, so how does it really work? That's what you're asking. How's it really work? Can we go ahead and answer?
You can.
Okay. So when you first park, you've got to tell it how long you're going to be there. If you tell it, I'm only going to be here 30 minutes, your credit card will not be charged. When it's up to 30 minutes is up, getting close, you better go in and extend the time, okay? If you extend the time to 31 minutes or more, you're going to get charged $2. If you're going to be there two hours, but you have to tell it how long you're going to be there. If you do not extend your time and Kristen comes through with her license plate reader, you'll get a ticket. So...
Or if you never entered it at all.
If you never entered it at all, you will get a ticket. Correct. Yes. Oh, did you have a question? Oh, okay. All right. So then there are three paid parking zones. Your interior lots, your exterior lots, and your parking deck. So all the interior lots are one parking zone. It's a little confusing because there's also park mobile zones, but the park mobile zones are different from, for purposes of our ordinance, all the rules apply to all the interior lots regardless of which park mobile zone you're in, okay? Then we have exterior lots. Right now, we only have one exterior lot. We'll talk about that in a minute. And then we have the parking deck as its own paid parking zone. So for your interior lot, paid parking zones, you've got two types. You've got your mixed lots where you can park by permit. You can do hourly parking. The rate is, and you are actually paying to park in the paid parking zones. The hourly rate is $1.50 per hour. I didn't put up there. There is a $10 max per day. You pay from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., as you know. In the ordinance, those are called regulated parking hours. There's no time limit except electric vehicles. There is a three-hour time limit per park because there's a limited number of those spaces. It's the same thing. If you park one hour or less, no charge. If you park 61 minutes, you're actually going to get charged for two hours because you're going to get charged for the hour you have been there plus the hour you're getting ready to be there, okay? Just want to clarify any confusion about that because I will be the first to admit I didn't understand that. So that's why I want to make sure everybody understands that if you park 61 minutes, it's $3.
And if, and the way that the accounting goes with regard to the app, one minute equals one hour?
That's correct. Yes, ma'am?
Okay. If you're in the EV space, if there's no time limit for parking, if you put in five hours, but you just stay in the EV space for three and then you move over to another one for another two, will that work or...
Yes, ma'am. That'd be perfectly fine.
Okay.
But you just can't stay in those plug-in for more than three?
That's correct. So your paid parking time for interior lots is on a per-lot basis, right? So you could pay for five hours and you could leave and come back in that same five-hour period. You could move from another spot, or you do exactly what you're talking about, leave your EV there for three and move it to another spot for the other two.
Okay.
Okay.
On the EV, you still have to enter it?
You do, and...
Even though it's free? Okay.
I'll let Kristen, Kristen, we had this conversation just earlier today because she was explaining to me how, because you can't tell park mobile you're in an EV spot.
Right. I get you.
Right? But she will have to monitor that and mark and, just like she does now as far as overtime. She'll be able to tell because they have to check in. So assuming they parked in that EV spot when they first got there, she would know how long they've been parked there. All right. Interior paid parking zones, we do have two permit-only lots, and in those lots, it's parking by permit only 24 hours a day, and there's no time limit, okay? All right. Exterior lot, paid parking zone. I went ahead and wrote in the ordinance in conversations with Brian to go ahead and provide for more exterior lots than just Dogwood, right? So I went ahead and included a category for mixed lots in the exterior zone, but we don't have any of those right now, but it would work much the same way as the interior mixed lot. The exterior lot that we have now is going to be a permit-only lot, but per direction of city council, when you discussed this last, it's permit-only Monday through Saturday, and then Sundays it'll be free and no time limit. And that's still the way everybody wants to go? Okay. That's what it says in the ordinance. Okay. Parking deck, paid parking zone. No time limit, paid parking 24 hours a day. The term regulated parking hours doesn't matter because the meters are on all the time, okay? In the, I mean, if you leave, come and go in the parking deck, you're going to pay, okay? It's $1.50 per hour, but it is a $10 per day max. No free parking. Like if you pull in there at 8:00 p.m. and you pull out at 10:00 p.m., you're going to pay for two hours, right? Please correct me if I get anything wrong. Okay. The day, it's $10 max per day, and the day starts at 4:00 a.m. If you park for one hour or less, no charge, but if you're in there for 60 minutes, one minute's the same, you'll get charged for two hours, $3, okay?
And is the parking in the deck, it's also via the app?
You can do it via the app.
Is there any way, there's no other way to pay in the deck I'm talking about?
There's three ways to pay in the parking deck.
So you, okay, got you. So you could actually go to the kiosk and pay or something like that?
There's a pay-on-foot kiosk. There's a driving out the gate kiosk. There's park mobile app, and there's parking permits where you have a puck that you pay monthly and you can get out that way.
Okay.
And I should have said that. I should have added that here that it is by, it's really mixed. Thank you. Every time I pick this up, I realize something different, so it's, you know, tried to boil it down to make it as simple as possible, but yes, permit holders, there are deck permits, and they can come and go freely, no time limit. Okay. Now, as part of the adoption of the ordinance, you're also going to adopt the official city parking map because this is what puts it on the ground officially. When y'all approve the map, you're actually designating the zones. And Ben Almong is here, and he is the architect of this map. He's done a wonderful job. He, Allison, they've been working really hard to make sure this is exactly right because trying to boil all this down on a map that's interactive and easy to understand is difficult. So I'm going to ask Ben to take you through the parking map.
All right. Thank you. So the parking map is directly on the main parking page. There's a button here, interactive parking map, that takes you into the Esri Arc Online official map here. So the way this interface works, you have a legend here on your right that describes all the colors because there's a lot of colors, and the moment you zoom in, there's a lot of labels. So we were trying to keep it as clear and concise as we can, so you'll notice that the lot types, the interior, the exterior, the permit parking only, they are all color-coded. So all of the interior parking, which is the mixed, or sorry, hourly parking, they're all green, whereas Dogwood, which is the only exterior for now, is pink. You also have all the on-street parking that are labeled, whether they're metered, metered with a time limit, free with a time limit or free without one, and the user will be able to navigate through. You can zoom in a little bit closer and see where all of these are located. They're also labeled with the number of parking spots per area, so instead of showing 1,000 individual parking spots, we just group them together and threw a label on top to show that there's five here, there's four here, but there's nothing in between, just so users can be a little bit more clear about that. All the handicap accessible parking is marked and whether or not they are metered or not, and sometimes it does take a moment to load. So those are still denoted separately with the number of accessible parking within that area. In the lots themselves, if there is accessible parking, there's also an icon showing where in the lot there is, and one icon is one spot. So here in the Azalea lot, there are five, five different accessible parking spots and then one electric vehicle spot, and you can see the number of EV spots in the parking deck and the Dogwood lot as well. And you'll notice that some of the items in the legend have asterisks next to them. Just to make it a little bit easier, we went ahead and separated that all out, so these metered on-street parking, there are, you know, some fine print behind them, so that is all found here. And whether or not the user is using this on their laptop to see before they come out, you can use your location tool, which will show you a little blue dot that is on, you know, any mapping device on your phone, and the same if you are using it on a mobile device. So the layout's a little bit more condensed, but it shows everything that the browser map shows, and it'll be a little bit easier when you're actually downtown to find where you are compared to where a parking spot is, and they're pretty, pretty precise, you know, down to a few feet with mobile, mobile phones these days. But the user on the mobile will be able to see the legend. That is still loading. So they'll be able to see the legend, see all the same details no matter what, and if they ever have any questions, they can click on the symbol up here, the Hendersonville logo, to take you right back to the parking page. That's all I have for the map. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. We were just talking while you were showing that, that it would be good also to locate the kiosks locations on there. So if we can, we don't have to do that by, but that'd be great if you could locate the kiosks on there too where people could pay. Any questions or, yes?
So for on-street parking, it really doesn't matter what kiosk you use, right? The kiosk is low, but it really doesn't matter because it's all the same, it's all handled the same way. If it, if it's...
It's in the same park mobile zone.
Yeah.
If you're on Main Street, if you're in one of the lots...
I meant on the street.
That one won't be able to pick up Main Streets, but yeah. And there are, you bring up a good point. There are a couple instances, like Spruce Lot, for example, right there on Fourth Avenue East, the meter there on the sidewalk, you, at the beginning, you'll be prompted to say, I'm on the avenue or I'm in the lot. So ones that have dual options where you might be parked on the avenue or in the lot and the kiosk is in a convenient space in between both, it will have you choose to make sure which one you're in.
But if you're using the app, it doesn't matter anyway because it's all going to be right on...
That's correct. You just got to click, click the correct zone.
Yeah.
Click the correct park mobile zone. Okay. So again, the, all the rules and everything we've been trying to talk about, we tried to boil down into the legend. So if people have questions, great place to start. Allison's also working on a frequently asked questions and thing. So like if I park for 61 minutes, just like I was saying, how much will I be charged? Well, $3, right? In the, so anyway, to do some things like that to make it easier. Okay. So there's just some general rules that are being put in place. First is if there's a time limit, that's consecutive units of time, right? So if it's 30-minute time limit, it's 30 consecutive minutes. You're not limited to, just being clear, you're not limited to 30 minutes per day or 30 minutes, whatever. Five hours is five consecutive hours. Check-in is always required. Moving within, this is what you were saying, moving within the on-street metered zone is permitted within your five-hour time limit without checking in again during your paid-for block of time. So yes, all of Main Street and the avenues is one park mobile zone is also one metered parking zone, so if you paid for a five-hour block, you could come and go as long as you could find a parking place and as long as you're within your paid time when Kristen drives through there, it would show, yes, they've paid, and you'd be good. Moving from lot to lot within a paid zone is not permitted without checking in and paying again. Even though it's, interior lots are one legal zone, they're different park mobile zones, so if I pay for five hours in one lot, I leave and I decide to park in another lot, I'll have to pay again. But you can move from space to space in the same lot like we were talking about within your permitted parking time. We talked about how you keep people from taking advantage of the one-hour free and the 30-minute free. We're recommending that you limit one free parking period in a five-hour consecutive period of time. So that means that if I go to Main Street at 9:00 and I get donuts and I use my 30-minute free, and I go back at lunchtime to pick up my lunch and I park, I'm going to have to pay for the second one even though I'm there less, less than 30 minutes because the, the idea is you don't want somebody to be able to do 30 minutes and then 30 minutes and keep checking in and out and keep checking in and out and just be able to park all day free. So that was the best idea that we could come up with to keep people from doing that. So, but if I, so if I went to McFarland's at 9:00 a.m. and then at 5:00 p.m. went back, I'd get a second 30 minutes because it's after five hours, okay? Any questions about that?
So the five consecutive hour there, we could change that, couldn't we?
You could.
We're choosing the time on that.
We are choosing, you are choosing...
I mean, like the 30 minutes within the five-hour period?
Yes.
That's totally our choice.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it, it's a, you know, it's a five, five consecutive rolling period that the equipment is smart enough to be able to track. Now, it's per tag, right? If you went home and switched cars and you brought back a different car, it wouldn't matter. It's per tag. All of this is geared toward the license plate. When you check in, you have to put in your license plate.
That's on your app though, right?
It's on the, or the kiosk.
Right, I know, but the app, you have the license plate, you, yeah.
Handicap spots, there are no time limits, just by state law, so people can park if they've got a handicap placard and they could park in their handicap, in a handicap spot, they will not get a ticket if they're, they're more than five hours, even on Main Street.
But they're also paying for that.
They have to pay for it. That's correct. No max on Main Street. Okay. Regulated parking hours are 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This applies to the lots, the interior mixed lots, parking deck, and the metered on-street parking zone. Sorry, it does not apply to the parking deck. See?
Okay, that's what I...
See? Right, sorry. It's so confusing. It does not apply to the parking deck. Parking deck is 24/7. Right. And no refunds. I forgot to put that up here, but no refunds. If you buy five hours and you only use one, no refunds. Okay. This will get you a parking ticket. Backing into a space or pull-through parking or parking in the wrong way on, in the on-street, okay? So putting everybody on, you know, no backing into spaces. This will also get you a parking ticket. Parking outside of the lines, you know, people have fancy car and they straddle a line so nobody can park on either side of them, they're going to get a ticket for that. They're entitled to take up one space in their car. Illegally parking in a handicap spot, we all know that would get you a ticket. If you forget to extend your paid-for parking time or your paid-for meter fees, this will get you a ticket. If you forget to check in, you will get a ticket. They're going to be pretty, I'll talk about the review process in a minute. Parking longer than is permitted within a limited time zone will get you a ticket. Entering the wrong license plate number at check-in will get you a ticket. It is all geared towards that license plate. Kristen said that people will put in 11111 right now. They will get a ticket if they do that because our system doesn't work if we don't enforce our system, right? Okay. This will get you towed. Worse than a ticket, this will get you towed. Parking in a no-parking zone. Parking in a prohibited spot, like blocking a driveway, too close to a fire hydrant in a fire lane. If you are a habitual violator, you will be towed. This is new. So we have people, believe it or not, who will park illegally over and over and over again and not pay their parking tickets and not pay their parking tickets, and we have some who have accrued $1,000 in parking fines. So, talked about...
Parking tickets.
Sorry?
That's a lot of parking tickets.
It's a lot. Well, what happens is if you don't pay in 30 days, you get $100 added. So it doesn't take as many as you think, but still, it's a lot. So habitual violations, six or more parking tickets in a six-month period, so one a month will get you a habitual. Or if you have three outstanding unpaid, that should say unpaid, three outstanding unpaid parking tickets will get you classified as habitual. So if you're classified as a habitual and you park illegally, you will be towed. You may be towed. It'll be up to them to exercise their discretion. If it's the first time, maybe not, but if you continue to habitually park illegally, you will be towed, right, Kristen?
By us?
By us. By a law enforcement officer.
Oh, not boot, but towed.
Towed. Mm-hmm. You will be towed. So we have to, we still have work to do, right? We need to look at the police department's towing policy and who are we going to call and what rules are they going to have to follow to be qualified to be a toer for the city? We still have to put all that in place. That's separate and apart from predatory towing. This is just how we will tow. But yes, you will be towed because sometimes that's the only thing that's getting people's attention. If you get $500, is what we were talking about today, in parking tickets, we're going to take it to court and collect them because it's just, people just snub their nose at it right now because they know we're really not doing anything. If you park in violation of the ordinance 24 hours or more, you may be towed, okay? So city ain't playing anymore.
What's that last one mean?
So if I was parked overtime in, like if I parked, left my park...
Like on Main Street?
Like on Main, or on Church Street?
Left there for a whole day?
Left it all day, you can be towed. Technically, under state law, we can tow any car, any vehicle who's parked illegally anytime. We already have that authority, but in the ordinance, we're saying that if you park in violation 24 hours or more, just to give people a little bit of grace period. But each day is a separate offense, so you will get another ticket. You will get a ticket for every day that you're there illegally. So there's tons of stuff in here that I'm just, we're, I'm trying to keep it pretty simple. All right. This is new too. So we've had kind of an unwritten appeal process if you get a ticket? Well, we are formalizing it a little bit. We're putting an informal review policy in place in the ordinance. So tickets must be paid within 30 days of receipt. Otherwise, you get a $100 penalty. You can request an informal review within five days of getting your citation, okay? Citation will maybe set aside if they can show they were actually in compliance with the ordinance or the citation was issued in error. That's it. No, I'm sorry, I forgot, dah 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 dah, that's not grounds to set aside a ticket. The discretion is on the front end of whether to issue the ticket or not, but once the ticket is issued... ticket is issued, only if it was issued in error or they were actually in compliance with the ordinance will they be able to get out of their ticket.
Who gets the fun job of making that decision?
So the chief has said he wants to sign off on those, but we did write in there, or his designee, which will most likely be Tracy Cox, Captain Cox. He's the one who's done it informally now, but most likely it'll be Tracy Cox. Dale, you don't want that. So if, you should get notified of decision within five days. So we're talking, should be ten to twelve-day period total for the review process, yes.
Do you have to do an informal review in person?
No.
You just call them up and say, have a ticket?
So already you can do it online.
Oh, okay.
But we want people who don't have the internet to be able to do it, too, so there'll be, and there already is, to a form somebody could fill out. We're encouraging people to do it online, so we can communicate by email, but, because that'd be the fastest, most quickest way of responding. But people can actually hand carry it and turn it in to the police department. So if you're denied, you will still owe your citation fee, which is fifty dollars, y'all already approved those amount, is fifty dollars, within the original thirty days, or you get another hundred dollar penalty, civil penalty.
All tickets are fifty dollars?
Except for handicap and except for habitual. So if you park in a handicap spot, it's two-hundred-and-fifty. If you get a parking ticket, it's fifty. If you are habitual, you get additional hundred. So if you're habitual, we're really gonna crack down on the habituals. Okay, fire lane and blocking a fire hydrant are a hundred.
That's not the truth.
Okay.
So I just happen to have a parking ticket here, Angie, I have no idea where it came from. It does have a twenty-five dollar fine, or some of them twenty-five?
It's twenty-five now.
Oh, but when?
But it will be fifty.
It's fifty, March third.
Okay.
Four AM.
Yes, so yes, it's going up. There, speaking of the fee schedule, there are a couple that we didn't put on there that we'll have to add, the ten-dollar max. Another one is the replacement. So when you get a permit, you'll get a puck free. If you want a second puck, like if I get a permit and I've got two cars, so my husband and I don't have to hand off the puck back and forth, we want a second puck, twenty-five? Twenty-five dollars. If you lose a puck, you can get another one for twenty-five dollars. That needs to be added to the fee schedule. Is there anything?
Lost ticket.
Lost ticket fee. If you're in the parking deck and you lost your ticket and you can't get out. How much is that?
Twenty.
Twenty dollars. So you can call dispatch and they'll let you out, but you have to pay, huh?
You get an invoice.
You'll get an invoice, yeah, you have to pay twenty dollars. Okay? That's it. Any questions?
Are we going to be a little fluid about this the first week or two as people are learning the system?
So city council has already directed, right, that everybody's gonna get a warning their first.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing is, you wanna talk about that we're gonna have people out and about the first week to help educate people. I don't know if we're gonna have a bright orange Ask Me About Parking t-shirt or something on.
Or Don't Mess With Me, please.
But, so we're doing everything we can and I imagine, I mean, people know already about parking tickets, but as far as the free period and the forgetting to extend and all of that, I'll let Kristen answer that.
The only thing I wanna add on the, what we'll be doing when we're out on the street to encourage people to talk to us, we do have parking vouchers for free parking. So if you come to one of us and need help, we will give you a parking voucher that you can program into Park Mobile and you'll get dollars towards parking. So please talk to us if you have a question and we'll get you to download the app and enter your car, so.
Can people buy those?
They buy vouchers?
For example, let's say I wanted to buy some time and say, here you go, go downtown, here's a voucher.
Will I give them to people?
We have the capacity as a city to do that. We don't give that to others. Businesses can validate parking, but we don't allow others to hand out vouchers for parking.
Okay.
I don't know if Park Mobile has Park Mobile dollars, I don't know.
There are Park Mobile vouchers that, the business can validate essentially through Park Mobile.
Hey, so I assume the people that will be out and about would be there to also show people how to use the parking meters, okay? Because I've already had several people go, is there's anybody who can come and show me how to use this? I'm sure we can find you somebody.
But if you're using the app, you don't have to mess with the kiosk, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But I think we'll still even need people that need help showing them the app.
Oh, no, I agree. I just wanna make sure that if I have the app, I don't have to mess with the kiosk at all.
The app is gonna be so much easier because it will store your license plate in there so that you don't have to keep remembering it.
There's a lot more detail in the ordinance. I, you know, encourage you to at least glance through it to see if there's anything that you really don't wanna pass because, like I said, we have to, we need something if we wanna go live. We can't go live till we adopt the ordinance. And so if there aren't any questions or any other feedback, I have talked to John and asked if we could just put it on consent, so you don't have to talk about it anymore, if that's acceptable to city council.
I guess one other question, the lot behind City Hall, is that just sort of the honor system there? I don't know if there's any way of.
It's not on the map.
It's on the map.
It is?
Yeah, it's for city business, you can park in City Hall lot for free and then it's free after city hours.
So you just hope that.
It's not a parking zone. It's not designated as a parking, it's not regulated.
Open parking lot after business hours.
It's not regulated, right.
Well, how about during business hours?
It's city business only during business hours.
So in other words, you'd have to know that somebody wasn't going into City Hall to do business. Right?
So there are employee-only spaces in there, too, and I don't think anybody gets ticketed for parking in there, but do they? Do people get ticketed for parking in the employee-only spots? Okay, all right. But then the part, the spots right along King Street are the ones for people to park in.
To do business.
To do business, right. So that's, that's just us as a property owner regulating, you know, I don't have it in here. I guess I should add that in there, though, actually, for ticketing people, I should add that in there. So I'll do that between now and next Thursday. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who has been involved in this process.
I have one question, and that is, I guess my only concern about this being on the consent agenda is this is an educational process and what you just went through, even in a bridge version of that, is starting to inform people about what's happening. So that's my only thought about, by having something during the meeting so that people can hear and it starts to inform folks about what's going on.
Happy to do that.
Sharing with council members. A lot of colors on that thing.
I mean, I feel like even if you just did the little, like, color-coded things that you had, yeah.
Matt, with the color-coded and just said, explain it from there, I think that's better than nothing.
Yeah.
I can do the, this will get you a ticket.
Yep, that too.
This will get you towed.
Yes.
Without going into all the details. Okay, we can put together and abbreviate it, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, next, Fire Department Strategic Plan.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon regarding the Fire Department's strategic plan, our new five-year strategic plan. I've asked the communications department to help zoom in so everybody can see a nice large picture, so it's at a hundred and fifty percent. She's gonna scroll with us as we go along. It's a little easier to follow rather than trying to look at the, at the detail shrunk down. So a couple of different things, one of the things, we had a previous strategic plan and obviously it finalized in the middle of COVID and of course, we did the best we could just to keep moving through things during COVID. And now that we've gotten through COVID, we wanted to get back on track with our strategic plan. So some of the purposes of the strategic plan is to set the focus for the Fire Department, define our visions, actions that we wanna take in the next five years, and then discern what our short and long-term goals are gonna be. Some of the things that we're looking forward to doing that is developing work plans in the different areas that we identified, tracking our progress. It's important that we do that. That was one of the deficits that we had in our last plan was we had a plan and we just didn't follow up with it or come back and revisit it every six months or a year and then announce what we've done. And so we have made some great strides, but we just didn't communicate, didn't do a very good job communicating that. So we wanna work in improving that this year. Jumping into the strategic planning process, we had an outstanding development. We utilized Fountain Works and North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting. So we had a community service that was available all times. Our communication department helped put that out. So we had an online survey for people to, that they could go on and had a fifteen-question community outreach, saying, hey, how are we doing as a service? What do you want us to do? What services do you think we do a great job in? What services do you think that we need to deliver that we're currently not doing? We reached out to our community and had an in-person ninety-minute session, and that included a hybrid model, so we allowed people that, from the comfort of their own home, being able to communicate with us. And as I say, in the community focus group, we had six people that attended that and usually we look at that as being a good sign. When people are happy with the Fire Department, they don't show up. And so while we wanted them to show up and participate, we're happy that they were pleased with what we're doing and move along. So we did reach out to our business focus group, so we went downtown merchants, we reached out to up and down the different avenues here in our community and reached out to the businesses and said, we want your input, how do you think we're doing? What services can we provide for you? We did have an outstanding, twenty-three members of our business community showed up, which we thought was fantastic, gave us some great insights, talked about some of the things that they liked that we were doing and that they wanted us to continue to do. So that's just as important for us to find out, what are we doing? And if you like it, don't stop doing it, continue that process. We reached out to our staff here. We had different departments. So once again, we're not in a silo, we work with many other departments and we wanna be able to communicate, how are we doing reaching out to the budget management office? How are we doing with our finance department? How are we doing with our communications department? So we wanna make sure that those relationships are good and that we're providing services to them and we're continuing to do that. We also did a internal engagement, that was where the North Carolina Fire Chiefs Consulting came in. We wanted to have a one-on-one opportunity for a experienced fire chief, retired fire chief, to meet with our members, our staff, so you could call that an internal shareholder meeting. How are we doing? What do we need to do? Where do you wanna see the organization in the next five years? What are some gaps? And so I liken that, when we did that, internal shareholders, it's a business, we have a business, and that is, we did a SWOT analysis. What are our strengths? What are some of our weaknesses? What are some opportunities for growth? Wanted me to be concerned about in the future, you know, which always pops up to be staffing. So we broke that down into six categories, so a brief, brief here, and then I'll go into slight detail in each one of these. One's obviously anticipating growth. When I came here almost seven years ago, we said, oh, we're just busy right now and very soon it's gonna settle down, it's gonna slow down, we're gonna catch our breath. And nearly seven years later, we're, seem to be going faster than we've ever gone before. So is one is anticipating growth and trying to maintain what we're doing, looking at being innovative and talking about how we can deliver services differently, more cost-effective, engaging and educating the community. We, I think we do a great job in that, but there's still some avenues where we could develop and grow a little bit, reach out to some, some areas of the community that we maybe haven't reached yet. A goal of maintaining a well-run department, what are we doing that's effective and efficient and continuing to work towards doing that? Building a strong climate and culture. We want our members to be happy when they come to work. That parlay's into going out into the community and the visitors and residents of our community having great service and then recruiting and retaining a diverse department. And so I'll break, I'll get into that a little bit as we go. So focus area number one, anticipating growth. As I said earlier, we're a business and one of the things that we're trying to incorporate in the management office and with our budget analyst, we're trying to make sure that our strategic focus is also working on putting a greater emphasis on what I call performance management. We wanna be, how are we doing? How can we strive to make continual process improvements? So we're looking at that harder and harder over these next five years than we probably ever have in the past. Anticipating growth, we wanna make sure that we're maintaining what we're doing, still allowing ourselves to deliver a great level of service and not get behind the curve. And for a little period of time, we had a little bit of that, we've played catch-up and now that we feel like we're confident, we're moving forward, we wanna make sure that we're looking and exploring those things. So exploring alternative funding models will be another very important part for us, both local, state and federal grants that would give us some money that we could utilize to help offset some of the costs of running our business. Safer Grant would be an excellent example of that, where we participated in the Safer Grant at your direction, we were rewarded with getting that and then also the difference that it makes in our organization. So we put another truck on the road, it increased our, what we call reliability, which is, we're running a bunch of calls, do we have anybody else that's available to now run the next call? So for a very, very long period of time, Mr. Connet and Mr. Paolo tell you that I was very anxious because we were completely out of trucks far too frequently. And so getting that third truck has made a significant difference in our availability to run or be available for the very next call. So certainly improving the response times and improving reliability. We hope that very, very soon, we did a regressing in November of, November twenty-eighth of 2022, we did a Department of Insurance, Office of the State Fire Marshal audit. So they do that every five or six years. We did extremely well, we're waiting patiently to find out what those results are gonna be, but obviously that Safer Grant and putting those extra trucks on the road made a significant impact towards that. So we're excited to see what that'll, what that new rating will be. Innovative thinking differently about how we're doing things, using technology. One of those examples that you'll see us reaching out to you about is preemption devices. So preemption devices, as a fire apparatus is approaching an intersection, and I like the example of we're leaving Station Two, we come out onto, from Sugarloaf Road out onto sixty-four, as the people are trying to get through the light on the top of the bridge on the interstate, there's nowhere for them to go. They can't pull off to the shoulder, they can't, there's nowhere for them to go and we're trying to gain access to get across the bridge and time is of the essence for us. A preemption device uses either, either line of sight or GPS, we would be utilizing GPS, and it knows how close we are to that light and turns that light green. Two things happen, one, we're not running through a red light intersection, we always come to a stop, but it keeps the flow of traffic going. The other thing is, as we anticipate that, that depth, we can always accelerate that so that the light turns greens for the people that are sitting there at the light. It gives them the opportunity to move forward and move out of the way, clearing the path for the fire apparatus. So it's much safer for the residents as we're trying to get past them, it's much safer for the fire apparatus and it limits wear and tear on our vehicles if we can start tripping the light screen and moving forward. And it has the ability, if two trucks are converging, it has the, the ability to decide which one's gonna go first based on how fast they're going and how quickly they're coming to the intersection. So there's a bunch of safety features that are built in. That would be the example. Technology, gas monitoring, it makes our members safer when we're going into a building, it makes the residents safer as well, because we're being able to go in and utilize technology to make them safer. As we come down, number two is pursuing response options. One of those things would be looking at quick-response vehicles or mini pumppers, which we consider like a miniature fire truck. So once again, trying to think outside of the box and work towards saving money, preserving what we currently have, because obviously it's very, very expensive. So what are some alternatives that we could be working towards? And then also, it bears mentioning, we're noting, if you'll look under potential progress measures, we're looking at items that we can go back and say, how are we doing and what are measurable outcomes? Like what are we looking for to say we're doing a good job in this area? So in each of these focus areas, you'll see where we've talked about how are we gonna measure how well we're doing? So I think that's important for us to do. Focus area number three is engaging and educating the community. I think we do an outstanding job, we have still some areas of room for improvement. Some examples would be virtual meeting software. So COVID introduced Zoom and Teams meetings and other opportunities for us, Facebook Live. So it's given us other opportunities to reach out to people without having them have to come to us, where we're still being able to communicate, deliver a message and do it in a virtual world. So we've looked at getting and incorporating some of that so that we can expand how we deliver. that we can expand how we deliver our information out to the public. And I still think, you know, there's always room for improvement. I'm always astounded by sometimes the questions are, why does the fire department go to this? Or we say, well, we do this, and they say, well, you didn't know you did smoke detectors. We didn't know you'd check carbon monoxide alarms. We didn't know that you do EMS. We don't, so, you know, we need to continue to push that message of all the things, the services that our organization offers. So that's another way to do that. Reaching out with our communications department and measuring how well we're doing and getting messages from them, so that we see what we're, how well we're doing and delivering that message. And then building on our positive relationships. We certainly feel like we've done an outstanding job. We continue to get good feedback, but we want to not rest on our laurels. We want to continue to push that forward. An example of that is doing CPR classes. I'd like to do a Citizens' Fire Academy. I say, I. We'd like to do a Citizens' Fire Academy at my prodding. I think it lends value and people understanding what we do. They get an opportunity to come in, wear the gear, cut cars up, you know, do extrication. There's a, you know, a different variety. We do an EMS scenario. So it gives them an opportunity to kind of like, see what we're doing, and that's over a couple weeks, a couple hours in the evening. It just gives them some exposure and better informs them about our jobs on a daily basis. Focus area number four, maintaining a well-run department. We certainly want to start visiting some of the accreditation actions. And accreditation is looking at how we do things. They don't tell us how to do things. They just look at and say, how are you, are you doing what you say you're doing? And are you, have plans in place for continual process improvement? So we certainly want to, again, keep looking at how we can make ourselves better and better. And then, of course, objective number four, too, in that section is making sure that we have the staff to support it. So it's one thing to get the extra staff and the extra trucks, but do we have the administrative support to facilitate the growth? Data collection, once again, I can't drive that point home enough. Certainly with Mr. Polley as my boss, as you well know, numbers are important. And so understanding how we're doing things and being able to articulate that in a value, rather than just saying, we think that we're doing a good job. So we're going to continue to do that. Number five, building a strong climate, engage staff. Same thing. I talked about it earlier, doing a SWOT analysis. What are we doing? What can we do better? What are some opportunities for us to keep working and moving forward? Increasing support for firefighters and staff. Thank you very, very much for allowing us the opportunity to have an embedded clinician. It's been outstanding for both us and the police department. We tend to see a lot of value in that. Increasing mental health awareness. An example of also support for firefighters through communications. We also did a blind and hard-of-hearing class, which was fantastic for our members. They ran them through the ropes, and it allows them to live in other persons' shoes and teach them about how hard it is to communicate. And so that helps them become a little more empathetic when they're running calls and they're dealing with people that have those issues. So that's number five, and of course, we want to continue to do that. Number six, which you'll hear over and over again, and I think this is across the board, and that's recruitment and retaining people. Utilizing data from our DEI, our consultants out of Charlotte. We've been working with them now for quite a few months, trying to pinpoint some areas where we can make some improvements, getting some insight from them, and then also reaching out and trying to diversify where we're putting our advertisements, how we're reaching out to the community, so that we can get a more diverse, more applicants that are more diverse. So doing that, we've talked about doing our own recruit academy and running it with our own members. That's another opportunity for us. That allows us to take on somebody that maybe doesn't have the funds, doesn't have the ability to leave their job and not be able to pay bills. As we bring them on, we run them through our own academy. We can run that process a little quicker. They're learning the Hendersonville way right off the bat, as opposed to they're taking the classes, and then we're spending time trying to teach them how we do things. So we talked about launching that, and then looking at progressive measures, how are we going to measure that? So we looked at number of job postings, what our recruitments are, turnover, that type of thing. So our retention rate, and just as a general outline, you know, we always get stressed when people come and go out of the city. The national average for fire departments for turnover rate is about 10%. And so we're at about 5%, which is still not well, doesn't sit well with us. But we typically have about two people per year leave for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's families. Sometimes it's to go to Asheville. They want to work for a bigger department. So while we're at 5%, we're at half that national standard, we, you know, we'd like that to be zero. So we're going to make every effort that we can to do that. One of the key metrics, and this is my wrap-up here, key metrics is response time. It's very difficult for us to improve our response time. Traffic is traffic and distance is distance. So reliability, we're trying to, once again, have the apparatus available, turn the calls quick, make ourselves available, so that we're not reliant on anybody else. We're reliant on ourselves. Turnout time is a huge one for us. We do track that. I send reports to Mr. Polley, my boss, and that is, how quickly we get up and get out the door. We have full control over that. So the faster we get up, the faster we get out the door, the faster we get on the truck, that's the time that we have the most control over to shorten the amount of time from the 911 call to when we arrive. The other thing we track is property value loss. So once again, the Department of Insurance looks at that and measures, does the fire department get there? Do they have adequate equipment? Do they have adequate staffing to immediately put the fire out and limit the damages? And I assure you, the Department of Insurance looks at that and says, am I writing big checks in this area, or am I writing little checks in this area? And when they're writing little checks, and we're doing a good job, and we're not doing additional damages, and we're very quick, they see that they're writing smaller checks, and then they're willing to then share that savings. They're willing to pass those savings on to the community. And so, again, we're looking forward to our rating coming out. And then the very last one is the ISO rating. So we're currently a three right now, and so we'll see where we land. But thanks to you, I think we've made great strides in all of the categories that they evaluate. So, and that concludes. Yes, sir, please.
The last rating, are we going to be, while we're in the construction phase?
Yes, sir.
Is that, are they going to change that rating at all while we're?
No. So thank you very much. It's an excellent question. We have overly communicated with the Department of Insurance, Office of the State Fire Marshal. And the conversation went something along the lines of, because you've come to us, because you continue to give us maps, because you continue to communicate where your resources are, because you continue to communicate when you're starting breaking ground, when you anticipate that, they've been openly receptive. We have automatic aid agreements in place to help mitigate any issues there. So because we've done that, it's had no impact, according to them, no impact on how they'll do our rating.
Okay.
And they know that we're, and as a recent phone call with one of them said, we know that you are being aggressive and planning for the future, and that your city council is spending money to build you a new station, which is going to help improve that. I think they're not being nearsighted. They're being, you know, farsighted and saying, these are the benefits that are going to come from the investment in the new fire station.
Thank you.
Fantastic. No questions? Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Sounds good. Thank you, and all the staff that worked on that as well. All right, council staff retreat. Mr. Connet, let me start.
Thank you, Mayor Voight, members of the city council. We are preparing for your 2023 council staff retreat. Remind you that it is March 9th and 10th, so a short two weeks away. We had a meeting today, a very productive meeting today, preparing for your retreat. We will be announcing a theme for you here in the next week or so. It'll be something along the lines of creating a focused vision for the community, and we'll have a little bit of homework for you leading into the retreat. We're handing that out next Thursday after your meeting, as we leave here and leave the meeting. But we want to spend a little bit of time, the management team had our management team retreat in January, and everybody has a copy of kind of the summary, the summary that Warren Miller put together for us for the retreat. We went down for a day and a half to the City of Greenville, South Carolina. As you can see on the second page, our agenda was, we did some site visits. We met with staff with the City of Greenville, had a nice presentation by their staff and the mayor. Their mayor spent some time with us, and he's very energetic. He's been on the council for a number of years down there. And I think one of the things that we came away with is, and the reason that we want to talk to you today, is kind of setting the scene for our retreat, or the theme, is, he really had, the mayor and the councilman, I think he's really been driven by the mayor, and it's important for us to think about as we're putting our priorities together, is this focused vision for the community. And they spent a lot of time, and he has used that as, his focused vision has really been around the downtown, and about bringing residential development around the downtown area, and focusing on a lot of the things that we've done in our downtown, as far as promoting, you know, the streetscape projects, promoting our downtown, promoting reinvestment. And now we've expanded that to Seventh Avenue. So really, got a lot of great insights from him. They continue to focus on park development, and as it relates to building an overall economic development strategy for the City of Greenville. So lots of great information there. So we spent some time with the folks at Greenville on Thursday, had a nice dinner downtown and visited downtown. And then on Friday, the management team spent time together reviewing our accomplishments. You will see these accomplishments in the report, and I'll talk about those in just a minute. And then we also spent some time looking at the growth that we've had in our community, and the challenges we see, and the silver linings. And then, at the end of the day, we played a little game of Staffopolis, which where each department had had to pitch how they would allocate 10 hypothetical positions for their depart, well, for the organization, but they could not promote their own departments. It's a little bit of a shark tank environment. So our group was very creative in what they did there. So, and just touching the base a little bit on, I hope you'll do this, we'll also have a year as it relates to year 2020. And believe it or not, we're, you know, we're almost, you know, two years way past that, and then 2021 and 2022. So you can see the accomplishments. You know, 2020 was consumed by COVID. You know, we spent time building shields to put in this room and on the council dais. I remember the shields. We had to adapt on the fly. We had to, you know, put in all kinds of testing protocols for folks that were getting sick. We migrated to remote work, and then online interactions, Zoom, other things, policies. So really, 2020 was consumed by, and it's, we're glad we're past that. But that consumed a year, and there's lots of other great things, such as you see there's, even though we were consumed by COVID, lots of great accomplishments in 2020 as it relates to making improvements to the water system in Fletcher. It was part of a northside project, Latson Road. We built a downtown bathroom. We expanded the downtown team. So lots of great accomplishments in 2021. And then focusing on 20, or excuse me, 2020, and in 2021, we continued through COVID, and, you know, had, you know, worked downtown. We installed the sidewalk murals. We received grants to help downtown businesses stay open. We merged our downtown advisory boards, and really helped support those downtown businesses affected by this pandemic. And then, you know, by departments and people, we set up the diversity committee coming out of the George Floyd tragedy. We hired two new HR employees, including our safety and risk manager. We embedded our clinicians, added a staff attorney, expanded the budget office, and then, you know, moved forward with the building of the police station. And the retreat's going to be held at the police station to symbolize, that was a project that the city council established as a priority in 2015. And we were able to build that project, and as we know, it's a great facility, and felt like this was, that was a great, it'll be a great background, as we set priorities for the next five years. Because one of the things we want to really talk about as we set priorities and that focus vision is, we've accomplished a lot of things on your priority list. A lot of those, we've checked a lot of boxes. And we know there's new priorities and new things the council wants us to look at and do, and we want to really narrow that focus into those priorities as we go forward in the next five years. Because we, from a facility position, once the fire department's built, we're going to be in really good shape. We've still got some other renovation projects to do, but for the most part, facility-wise, we're in good shape, and we know council has priorities for that. And then moving on to 2022, we're starting the fire station, and your parking deck is now built. It'll be open next week, as we know. We've done some interior renovations. Excited for you to see that on March 9th, so that you can see our new HR department, our new legal department on the fourth floor. So we're happy with that space. Again, we continue to make improvements to the water system, which is evidence of us being able to be resilient during the winter storm we had around Christmas, and be able to come through that with flying colors. And also, our first large economic development project was completed with Jabil in 2022. We've been doing Seventh Avenue rebranding, but again, lots of great accomplishments in the last three years, and we want to celebrate those and be successful about that.
I love that the parade map is listed on our accomplishments.
Travis left, and we are very happy that Travis and the GIS department left, because that is a sore subject with Travis. So, but no, I think that is a great accomplishment. I think the work of our communications team should not go unnoticed as it relates to the, our wonderful Christmas map. So there. So we also looked at, as we know, the city continues to grow. You'll see there on page eight, our silver linings. You know, it's a great city, and people want to live here. You know, we have a great story to tell. And I think despite what you read on social media, especially in the last couple of weeks, it is a community that people want to live. And I think, and I made a little fun of social media, but it's been interesting to watch the, some of the social media, Facebook pages and things like that, where folks have been complaining and upset, and, you know, there is some information that is not very accurate on our social media, but other members of our community are correcting those and defending the job that we're doing as a city. So I think that is evident, that we, evidence that we have a great story, and people are generally happy with our community. I mean, no one's ever 100% happy, but we feel good about that. And we have, we have the resources to build our vision. We have very committed staff as we go forward, and a strong culture of civility. So those are kind of our silver linings. We do have some challenges going forward. As you heard from the fire chief, and you'll hear from other departments, you know, we're constantly looking to, or trying to recruit well-qualified candidates for our positions, and that continues to be hard. We have a small population, but we play bigger than we are. That's, you know, that's my standard phrase, as far as our challenges. Revenue tends to lag behind development. We're in this process now that we're having to build up our organization to deal with the growth, but the tax base is not there yet. It's just under construction. So it's lagging behind. And so we're having to deal with that. And in a great phrase that Brian, I think Brian coined this, the whole Yellowstone syndrome, how do we deal with the demand for people to be here, but also, how do we keep our community like, what we love about our community, right? How do we balance that? And that'll be a great, I think that'll be an interesting conversation as we go through the next 12 to 18 months, about, you know, you cannot build a wall around the community, but how do you, how do you maintain that quality of life? So lots of good information there. It was a good retreat. And then we did Staffopolis, spent some time, very creative group of folks pitched their needs, and you can see here that, you know, we ranked in two different rounds, we ranked positions of spreading positions around the organization, 10 positions. And in both rounds, Public Works was the top. Works was the top vote getter. Because I think, I think if you look at Public Works and you also look at police, and in some cases, finance, and administration ranked high also. But interestingly enough, the positions that some of our staff put in administration were really related to capital project development. So those positions, looking for a project manner, those positions could have gone in Public Works, it could have gone in engineering, it could have gotten numerous departments there. So I think as we head into the retreat, we're going to ask you to, for you to tell us your individual priorities. We're going to ask you to, we're going to spend some time, we have five or six focus areas that we're going to let you spend some time at various meeting with our staff during the retreat day. I don't want to let too much out of the bag yet as we're developing this, but whether it be finance, whether it be sustainability, whether it be parks and recreation, whether it be transportation, whether it be community development, all those focus areas are important. But there's lots of different priorities in all those areas. And we will spend some time trying to prioritize those areas and hearing from you about what you want to be your priorities. But the one thing I think I want to bring back to you as we set the groundwork is, and we heard this from Mayor White in Greenville, is we don't want to forget the basics. I think that's what we heard from our staff, particularly as it related to Staffopolis, is we still have to pave the streets. We still have to mow the grass. We still have to pick up the trash. We still have to do the basic local government things that we do. And it's easy in the current climate to get pulled in many different directions. And I think what we want to bring home as part of the retreat is we want that focused vision. We want to, where do we want to take the city? How are we going to do it? But we have to have the human capital, you know, in our organization. We still need to, and I think that's why Public Works scored the highest, is the folks, the boots on the ground are the folks that really keep the city moving forward and keeping, you know, the appearance of the city looking great, making sure that we're collecting the solid waste, those kind of things. So as we're prioritizing our projects and prioritizing what we want to do in the future, we can't lose sight of, we still got to do the basics. And I think so many communities around the state are doing, you know, we're all struggling with that now, I think, because there are so many things that are pulling us in different directions, whether, you know, our citizens want us to be involved in a variety of things that are not traditional municipal issues, whether it relates to social issues, whether it relates to, in some cases, things that are policy issues that are really at a higher level, that I think it's important for us to take a stand on. But at the same time, I think as we set our priorities, I would like for us to focus on the basics. And then these issues, let's bake in those issues related to our core services that we provide to our citizens. And I think that's important as we go forward. So we just want to set the tone a little bit heading into the retreat. In a couple of weeks, you'll see this infographic as part of the retreat, and we'll hang it up in our office, so you'll see it. And we're giving you some homework so you can begin thinking about what your priorities are for the next four or five years. What do you want to see done? You know, where do you want to see the focus in the community? Again, we've talked about parks. We've talked about sustainability. We've talked about transportation, community development, those things. So that is the focus as we go forward. And we want to set the stage as we begin that. So glad to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Well, we're looking forward to whatever it is, March 5th and 6th, or something like that, 9th and 10th. Okay. Thank you very much. Well, we are at the end of our agenda. Woo, look at the time.
I know.
My goodness. Okay.